Good evening. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing, Thursday, December 9th. It's the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. I'll call the meeting to order. Given that this meeting is actually a hybrid meeting and we have some of our board members actually attending virtually, I'm going to ask the clerk to do a roll call, please.
Chair Overman.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kim.
Here, sorry.
Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you, you have a call.
Thank you. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of proposed amendments to the future of Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I'll now recognize the staff and the Planning Commission, who will provide an introduction to tonight's agenda.
Cheers, thank you, Madam Chair, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. The item before you, the first item before you this evening, item A1, is HCCPA 1909. It's a Future Land Use Map Amendment on Boy Scout Road in Grove Lane. The applicant has requested a continuance, which was transmitted to you all several weeks ago, requesting you ought to consider continuing the hearing date to March 10, 2022, at 6:00 PM.
Excellent, thank you. For us to do that, we would be...
I'll move for a continuance, and I just want to point out, because it was noticed and asked for several weeks ago and not one second before the meeting tonight, so...
Understood, thank you. Do I have a motion by Commissioner Kemp?
Second.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Cohen? And Commissioner, I think? I can hear you, Commissioner Smith, was that you too? Okay. With that, hearing no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yeah.
Thank you, motion carried, seven to zero.
And the date for that continuance will be March 10th at 6:00 PM?
Right, 2022.
2022.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is A2, HCCPA 2021B, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, text amendment to the property rights element. Planning Commission, would you like to offer introduction to this amendment?
Mr. Mark Hudson will be the presenter on this item. Mark?
Thank you, good evening Commissioners, Mark Hudson, Planning Commission staff. If HTV could bring up my PowerPoint, please. Thank you. As Mr. Garcia already mentioned, this is for your consideration of the adoption of a new property rights element. It is identified as HCCPA 21-20-B. If I could have the next slide. This is the third time you've heard this presentation, so I'm going to go through it quickly, and of course, stop me if you have any questions as I go through it. We were instructed by the Board of County Commissioners to develop a property rights element based on template and the model element provided by 1,000 Friends of Florida, which we have done. We believe this complies with House Bill 59, which became effective on July 1st, which requires each jurisdiction in the state to adopt a property rights element. If I could have the next slide. The element is divided into three sections. The first section identifies the specific property rights and how they will be respected within Hillsborough County. This section by itself meets the minimum requirements of House Bill 59, and the language comes verbatim out of the legislation. If I could have the next slide. The second section deals with identifying the rights of people to participate in the decisions that affect the lives of properties, their lives and property. Many of the provisions in this are already addressed in your Plan Amendment Procedures Manual and your Land Development Code. Of course, this would codify those also within your comprehensive plan. If I could have the next slide. It deals with noting that these decisions and these processes affect plan amendments and zonings and not decisions of lesser significance, like variances and things of that nature. It allows participation by interested parties, which is a little bit broader than affected persons, so we are encouraging participation on a broad spectrum of our community. And it does continue to allow the Board of County Commissioners to allow discretion in the permitted speaking times during those proceedings. If I could have the next slide. It also establishes a link concerning public hearing notices between your Land Development Code and your Procedures Manual and the comprehensive plan. We also note additional requirements beyond those related to signage, legal advertisements, posting on websites. It also requires the applicant to conduct a neighborhood meeting to garner citizen input prior to then becoming before the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. If I could have the next slide. The final section relates to how those decisions are made and the standards of which we have set for those. If I could have the next slide. And it notes that for plan amendment decisions, you have to have a majority plus one for either map or text amendments, and for zonings, you have to have four affirmative votes. It also ensures that materials are available in advance for the public to review prior to you making those decisions. If I could have the next slide. We had a transmittal hearing October 21st, who instructed us to transmit to the Department of Economic Opportunity, which we did. They have indicated to us that they have no comments or objections, so we're here back to you this evening for your consideration of adoption. If I could have the next slide. And with that, I stand for any questions. We're here, of course, as I just mentioned on the last slide, for your consideration to adopt the property rights element for the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, meeting the legislative requirements of the House Bill 59. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and we do have, I believe, one speaker that signed up to speak to this item. And with that, I will call on Jacob Kramer.
Thank you, Chair. This is Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller. Commissioners, I ask that you approve the original element that conforms with House Bill 59. I think you all know, your own Planning Commission has advised that the current element before you does not meet the intent of House Bill 59. Substantively, I think the biggest issue is the expansion of the supermajority vote. I haven't seen any justification so far that there's a problem with how this board votes when considering text amendments, and there's no reason that those should be subject to a supermajority vote. There's no reason to tie the hands, essentially, of a future board. To be clear, there are some good ideas in this current draft, but many of these concepts are not appropriate in a property rights element and haven't been vetted by the public. I reviewed the record up through yesterday and was not able to find any public comment in support of the version of the element before you today. In fact, all of the comments have been in opposition. I'm not aware of this board ever having adopted a new element to the comprehensive plan with overwhelming public opposition. This board oftentimes says that it wants public comment, and it wants to listen to public comment, and I would ask that you do that tonight. So I would ask that you approve the element tonight, but that you remove all parts of it that are not specifically required by House Bill 59, and leave consideration of the other items in this element for another day. Thank you, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. We do not have any other public speakers or commentators at this point, so I will open it up for discussion. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Was that... I would like to move approval. I would like to move approval. I think this has been well-vetted, it's been there for months, open for discussion. We've had significant discussion, it's gone to Tallahassee and had the approval of the state as a form, and it's been adopted, as we've stated before, by other jurisdictions prior to us, and I think it's good, if we have to require a supermajority for any increases in density when we do our map amendments, and I think we should conform with our text amendments that also do that. In fact, I think it's even more important that we have the significant support of the board and a supermajority for the text amendments. So now I'm thinking, I think there was someone else speaking, but, so I'm moving approval of it as drafted.
Second.
That's Commissioner, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. So do I see any comments regarding this item? I actually have some comments that I would like to offer. You know, we've received some letters about this, and I understand the, and don't disagree with the idea of the supermajority in this particular case, but much of what's discussed in this particular amendment, you know, does impact the rural communities. And we did receive a letter today from the Florida Strawberry Growers Association regarding this comp plan amendment, and in their letter, the growers voiced concerns about the adverse consequences to valuations and borrowing powers that should we pass this item. I've been a long advocate of protecting our agricultural industry, that's, you know, what I got my degree in, and I have been very concerned about how our actions move forward could possibly impact the agricultural industry and its economy. I would, and I welcome, I would welcome a little more time just to understand how this comprehensive plan amendment would affect our rural communities, our growers. As noted in their letter, the strawberry growers have a huge economic impact on our county, and nearly $1 billion, you know, in our economy, and we need to work to enhance, rather than diminish, this impact. It's my understanding that this is a relatively time-sensitive issue, and I've confirmed with staff that if we were to continue to march, we could keep, that would actually still keep us on track, but it would give us an opportunity to talk with the industry, because I'm not seeing outreach, I'm not seeing movement on our TDR, which is why I asked at the board meeting yesterday, is like, can we work on this in the first quarter, so we're a little bit, get some more information about how our changes in policy would impact in a very important part of our industry? And I don't have that information as we speak. So I would like to pass the gavel to Commissioner Smith and offer a substitute motion to continue this item, to direct staff to work...
I think Commissioner Smith has a second on that.
Oh, so we need to go to, well, Commissioner White, are you available to take the gavel for a second?
Yeah, yeah, I'm available, yes ma'am, I'm ready.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'll pass the gavel to Commissioner White, but I would like to make a move to continue this item, to direct staff to work with our stakeholders, including the Florida Strawberry Growers Association, to bring back this item on March 10th, public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to continue this item by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers, that's a substitute motion. Is there any discussion to the substitute motion?
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
And Commissioner Kemp.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Smith, I'll recognize you first.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, I appreciate your, you know, listening to the, or taking into consideration the last-minute letter we received today from the strawberry growers, and wondering what that means. But I've read it carefully and saw nothing specific. I have heard these arguments before that brought forward any time we were proposing any regulations, whether it be wetland protections, or zoning regulations, or community plans, by special interests that, you know, that don't want any rules. But I didn't see anything specific here that convinced me in any way, there was, I mean, there was nothing pointing to how this amendment would impact their borrowing power. I know that's something that's brought forward in many times, but it needs to be specified. How is this going to impact your borrowing power? When you look at the actual amendment, and the things that 1,000 Friends of Florida proposed, which has already been to the state, and the state has approved it, there's things like, you know, reaching out to the community and noticing things. It's nothing specifically going to impact borrowing power, it's things that are going to allow community participation, and at the end of the day, protect property rights for everyone, for the property owner seeking rezoning, as well as the property owners in the neighborhood who are concerned about their property values as well, and their investment in their major home, you know, their major investment, which is oftentimes their home, and how that impacts them financially to have some zoning changes happen in their neighborhood, or people who are concerned with environmental impacts. This is not an onerous amendment here, this is guaranteeing or trying to encourage respect for the property rights of everyone on all sides in very loose and innocuous terms. So without any other specific objections or information at this late date, I think we should go ahead and approve this tonight, because, and by the way, if we don't, we do impact other people's property rights, because there are some people who have filed comp plan amendments, and the state has said that until we approve this amendment, we cannot approve any other large-scale. We can approve some small-scale ones, but it's my understanding that there are some other amendments that people are seeking that wouldn't be able to be approved in the proper time. So we would be putting off their property rights and their right to the procedure and process. We've been looking at this for four months. We have had workshops, we've had hearings, it's been to the state, it's been back. I put, you know, I just question whenever we're getting stuff thrown at us at the very last minute by people who've been well-advised of this procedure and this matter before us, and well-advised that we approve the transmittal of it. To come in at the last minute has become kind of a tactic that I'm frankly tired of. I think these are all people from the Tampa Bay Builders Association, to Mr. Kramer, to other organizations that could well have had these discussions in the last four months and don't need to be asking us to postpone this for extra time now. That's, that just doesn't sit well with me, and I won't be able to support a continuance or delay in this without any better reasons having been presented to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I agree with all the points made by Commissioner Smith. We have heard over and over again, it's been thrown at us, and it's never been demonstrated to be true, and I've asked some of the people that are very familiar with borrowing, and could have probably had them in here tonight if I thought that that was going to be thrown up as an argument, that this is not, in fact, I think if, and we, I think everyone on the board cares deeply about agricultural lands in Hillsborough County, and by requiring a five vote, as we do for other things, I think is the best thing we can do to protect agricultural lands. That is, there are plenty of places where there's supermajority votes, and there's big agricultural lands, and there's not, they're not throwing this up, and it's not an issue. I just find that to be spurious, especially it's thrown ever, all the time, without any evidence of the truth of the matter. But secondly, I do feel, this is, first of all, we're hearing from three, basically three people on the last day, and there are three standard people that follow us totally. I mean, they watch everything about this, and I feel like, I'm really tired of this being done, not in good faith. Coming up, we go through this, we go to the state, they are well aware it happened for months and months, and then three people on the last day, in the last afternoon, I mean, I get an email at 1:20 this afternoon, I do not feel like this is in good faith, I feel like this is just, it's a disturbing tactic to me, and one that really doesn't speak to the, you know, the protecting everybody, and as Commissioner Smith, and as I said the first time, it's been approved by the state, it's been adopted in other places, and I do not believe for a second that these groups have not been well aware of this for months, and for them to contact us on this final day and ask for this, because all of a sudden they want involvement when they haven't tried or haven't been here before on this, I find very disturbing. So I will not be supporting the substitute motion, and I think if anything in this is a problem, then we can reconsider it in the future, and they can come back and say what it is, and we can look at it independently and separately. I think it'd be really wrong not to move forward on this this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Is there any further discussion to the substitute motion?
Commissioner White, I do have my hand raised, I'd like to respond.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Overman.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I do hear that it does appear as though this is last minute, because we did just get the letters, and I do get that. I also agree with Commissioner Smith that, in many cases, this is, you know, one of the largest investments for a homeowner, their home is one of their biggest assets and the most important thing to them. That is also the case with a rancher, that is also the case with a strawberry farmer whose family has owned property for, you know, centuries, and so, or decades, or for long periods of time. And I know for a fact that we've been speaking regarding developing a method to address densities, address property rights, address values, and I've been asking for that equation to be able to determine the impact on a landowner that actually has the need to understand the value of their land, either for the operation of their business, or for the wealth that they might transfer to another family member, through the use of a transfer of development rights. And we don't have that, we've been, I've been asking for it for several years, and we're not there yet. So I do understand that it seems as though this is last minute, but I would like to have an opportunity to speak with those that would be impacted by, you know, the policies that address rural densities in Policy 4.1, in Objective 4, that talks about those items. And I think it would be valuable to give ourselves two months to reach out to that community, to see if we can hear from the consultant that may be working on the equation that could give us a better understanding of the valuation changes that might be considered in this property rights amendment. And so I ask for your support to just bring it back on March 10th, after we've had an opportunity to talk with the major stakeholders that would be impacted by this particular text amendment. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman. Is there any further discussion on the substitute motion?
I don't see any hands raised, sir.
Okay, I'm just, whose hands are raised?
I said, I don't see any other hands raised, sir.
Oh, okay, well, I'll just say that I continue to support this private property rights element substantially in the form that it's in. However, I see no harm in tapping the brakes just a little bit, and giving the board and staff an opportunity to hear the concerns of these stakeholders that have reached out to us. I'm anxious to see what, if this motion, if this substitute motion passes, what might become of that, and consider any new information that might be brought forward. So with that being said, seeing no further discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote on the substitute motion.
Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kim.
No.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
White.
Yeah.
Thank you, motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Smith voted no.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Commissioner White, I appreciate it.
And just to announce that continuance date again for the record, March 10th, 2022, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. With that, we'll move on to A3, HCCPA 2101, Future Land Use Map Amendment, Val Rico Station and Silver Lane. The Planning Commission would like to offer an introduction to this amendment, please.
Madam Chairman, thank you, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff, once again. Your presenter this evening for the Planning Commission will be Ms. Unika Mills. She'll actually be making the presentation for item number three, and four, and five. Thank you very much, Unika.
HTV, can you please bring up my presentation for 2101?
Please stand by.
Good evening, Commissioners, Unika Mills, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2101, Val Rico Station and Silver Lane. Next slide, please. The site is located within the eastern portion of Hillsborough County. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated plan amendment that's located within the urban service area on approximately 14 acres. The site is not located within a community planning area. The request before you this evening is to change your future land use designation from Residential 4 and Residential 9 to Residential 20. Next slide, please. To give you some context of the area, the site is located south of State Route 60, Mulrennan Road is located along the eastern portion of the site. There is a railroad that also runs along the eastern portion of the site. As for uses in the area, there are some single-family residential to the south of the site. We do have a presence of multifamily to the west of the site. We have a mobile home park further east of the site. Next slide, please. This is looking west from the site along State Route 60. Next slide, please. This is looking east from the site along State Route 60. Next slide. This is internal to the site, the multifamily that's currently developed on a portion of the site. Next slide. As it stands today, currently, the site is designated as Residential 4, and there's a small portion of Residential 9 at the northern piece of the site. Other future land use designations in the area, Residential 20 is directly west, we have Residential 4 to the south, Residential 9 running along State Route 60, and Residential 6 is at Mobile Home Park across Mulrennan Road to the east. Next slide, please. And again, the proposal before you this evening is to change your future land use designation to Residential 20, which there is already a presence of Residential 20 directly west of the site. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Currently, under the residential four and residential nine future land use, up to 60 dwelling units could be considered on the sites. Or for non-residential intensity, approximately 150,000 square feet could be considered. With a residential 20, the density would increase to approximately 296 dwelling units that could be considered. Or as far as the non-residential intensity, it would increase up to over 480,000 square feet of non-residential uses that could be considered. Next slide, please. The request is consistent with the following policies. Objective one, which speaks to directing 80% of the growth with, in the urban service area. And then it's consistent also with Policy 1.2, which speaks to future land use classifications within the urban service area, shall have a density of at least residential four or greater within the urban service area. The request is also consistent with neighborhood protection policies. Objective 16 speaks to neighborhood protection. Policy 16.8 directs the overall density of new residential development to be compatible with the existing development pattern. And then 16.10 directs any density increases to be compatible with the existing development pattern as well. Next slide. Also, I will mention there were no agency comments, or no agency objections, but it is important to note that there is sufficient wastewater, potable water capacity for the proposal, as well that State Route 60 is at a level of Service C. And there is part bus line that runs along State Route 60. And Planning Commission staff found HCCPA 2101 to be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan and recommends that Board of County Commissioners seek this consistency finding. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. I truly appreciate that. This is a public hearing? No, yeah, this is a public hearing. I don't see that we have anyone signed up to speak, however. But shall we hear from the applicant?
Are you ready for me, Chairwoman?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Mr. Preston, please, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I will tell you that we've received all approvals for this project. Planning Commission staff, Planning Commission has, Unika, well presented to you, all the agencies were positive comments. There's a companion rezoning. The only hell to say on that is we've received all approvals on that as well. And we've received no opposition from anyone in the public. I've noticed this project literally five or six times. So I'd be happy to forego a PowerPoint presentation. I'd be happy to do that if you like, but I think Unika presented this very well. Again, no one from the public is opposing, and this is a project for an existing and to add to an existing multifamily, very nice community in the area.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Seeing as there's no public comment, are you going to waive your time for rebuttal?
I'll waive my time for rebuttal, yes.
Excellent, thank you. And then we'll close the public hearing and open it up for board discussion.
Move the item.
I have a motion for my approval by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith. Is that correct?
That's one way to go. We were both moving it at the same time, so that's fine.
Okay, great. If you're fine with the way I stated it, then with that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
The next item is A4, HCCPA 2105, Future Land Use Map Amendment, South 70th Street and 66th Streets South. Planning Commission, would you like to make this presentation, Ms. Mills?
Again, Unika Mills, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2105, South 70th Street and 66th Streets South. This plan amendment is located centrally within Hillsborough County. This is a privately initiated plan amendment located within the urban service area at a little bit over 16 acres. It's located within the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan. The site is located south of Hartford Street, along 66, runs along its western boundary. 70th Street runs to the east of the site. As for uses in the area, there are some single-family residential uses south of the site. There's also some more scattered single-family uses located along the northeastern portion of the site. Along the northwestern portion of the site, there is a presence of industrial uses that run along 66th Street. And then there's additional industrial uses along the western portion of the site, along 66th Street. This is the site in its current state. This is the site looking north of the site. Again, there is that presence of open storage and industrial uses that are already existing. This is the southern portion of the subject site. And this is a photo of 70th Streets, running along 70th Street, and the site is located on the left-hand side of the photo. As far as the current future land use designation of the site, it's currently designated as residential six, which is a yellow area. Other future land use designations in the area, that light gray is light industrial, that pink color is the suburban mixed use six, and we have a larger presence of suburban mixed use six to the east. Again, the proposal before you this evening is to change your future land use designation to suburban mixed use six. Currently, under the future land use designation, the maximum density that could be considered on the site would be 98 dwelling units. The current maximum intensity would remain at the same FAR at 0.25 or a little over 178,000 square feet of non-residential. So the major change with this proposed proposal is that open storage and industrial uses would be allowed with the suburban mixed use six future land use classification. With this aerial, this just gives us an idea of the amendment site. It falls within the designated economic development area as proposed by our Hillsborough County Economic Development Department. The proposal this evening is consistent with the following policies. Objective 16, which speaks to neighborhood protection. And then we have our economic development policies within our Comprehensive Plan Policy 26 and Policy 26.1, which designates our economic development areas, as well, the request would be consistent with the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan. And based on those considerations, Planning Commission recommends that the DOCC find HCCPA 2105 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. We can hear from the applicant. The applicant has three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tumai of HTP Inc. Address is 14031 North Del Mayberry Highway, Tampa, Florida 33618. I'm representing the applicant, Rigoberto Reyes. The applicant is seeking to change the future land use designation on 16.36 acres from Res 6 to SMU 6. Mr. Reyes and his family owns four parcels. His intent is to change the future land use to allow for more open storage and truck parking for his business expansion and neighbors and friends who are truck drivers to park in the community. The properties are currently under violation with code violation, with code enforcement. The applicant has cooperated with code enforcement to comply with all the requirements in order to rectify the violations. Back in August of 2019, the applicant applied for PD rezoning for open storage and truck parking. However, during the review process, Planning Commission staff felt that the future land use amendment to change to SMU 6 would be more appropriate for his proposed uses. Therefore, we filed the comp plan amendment to change the future land use. So we feel that along with a change in the comp plan amendment and the PD rezoning, the applicant will be in full compliance with the violations. This area, over time, has transitioned into more intense uses. The proposed change of future land use to SMU 6 is compatible with the surrounding land uses in the area. The subject, as Unika has stated, the subject is in the urban service area and adjacent to the subject property are intense land uses directly to the west. In addition, the subject property is within the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan, which supports the opportunity for businesses and job growth, as well as supports compatible infill and redevelopment. A change to Res 6, a change from Res 6 to SMU 6 will still provide the opportunity for residential to be built on the site. This change would also provide for an appropriate transition between the industrial to the west and the residential to the east. Overall, the proposed change would be comparable to the surrounding development pattern. We received more than 30 letters of support, which we submitted into record back in July when we had the Planning Commission public hearing. The Planning Commission found the comp plan consistent. Therefore, we respectfully request your approval and adoption of this comp plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mai. I appreciate that. We actually have you also signed up as, for public comment. Was that the presentation that you wished to make?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I don't see any other individuals signed up for public comment at this point. So I don't believe there's a need for rebuttal at this point either. So you waive your right to rebuttal?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for board discussion.
Move approval.
Okay, okay. I have a move for approval by Commissioner Myers and seconded by Commissioner Smith.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you very much. Please do a roll call vote.
I have, I'm on your tab.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not see, I apologize. I did not see that. I apologize.
And I do have a couple of questions of staff.
Okay, just one second, please. I have Commissioner Myers and then I have Commissioner Kemp. Did you want to comment or question? Okay, I'll put that down. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized. I apologize.
Thank you. I just wanted, because it's, I'm not, not supporting this, but I wanted to point out a few things. I'd like to see if you could put up the map again, which is, I, these pages aren't numbered, but a second to, here, this, I don't know if we can put this up, this map right here?
Is that the one you're looking for, Ms. Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, so the, so, and I keep having this issue come up. So if you look to what is the west side there, the darker gray, that is light industrial, correct? All of that?
Correct.
Okay. And then if you look at the yellow, that's all Res 6.
That is correct.
Okay. And then you have what is this category of suburban mixed use six? And I guess the two little platted areas there are already suburban mixed use six. And then you're looking to make this other area suburban mixed use six.
That's the proposal.
Now, and as, and as I understand it, one of the categories, I think it's just misleading when you hear about suburban mixed use six, because I know there are some mixed use categories that require true mixed use. That's like when you require to have, you know, I've even heard about percentages of office or residential or something like that. And we heard at the beginning of this, and we were told before, it was for open storage that's non-complying, which would, if it strictly fit under a category, would, I guess, be under something like light industrial. But in any SMU 6, it is, you are allowed to do 100% light industrial. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So.
You can do, if you're under a certain threshold.
Uh huh. So can you, in certain thresholds, you mean certain sizes? Or, or?
Right, certain acreage thresholds.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, certain acreage thresholds. So for the suburban mixed use six, if your 20 acres are over, that's when the mixed use has to kick in.
And the logic behind that, I guess, is that, and I'll let you just, the logic behind calling something SMU 6, but it could be 100% light industrial, why is that category like that?
I mean, I'm not sure of all of the history of the category because it was created years, years ago before I even was a part of the Planning Commission. So I really can't answer that exactly why, you know, you're not allowed, you don't have to have a true mixed use until you reach a certain acreage threshold.
Okay. And if we can just go to the map, that's the true Google aerial map now? And see what's down on the ground there? Nope. This one. Oh, yes, that one. Okay. So you can see what is the yellow area to the south. That's actually, you know, developed as a residential area. And up there to the northeast is a residential area. And then you can see across the street where you have it all, light industrial is all warehouses and that. And there's even some open areas there that are, have nothing in them right now. And up to the north, it does look pretty much light industrial. To me, it looks like a big parking lot up there and empty, or not light industrial, but actually even rural or undeveloped at this time. And so it almost could, I mean, go either way at this time. It could be a development or we could do the SMU 6, which allows for light industrial. So I just wanted kind of the board to know or understand that, because I, I, you know, I kind of question that because it's, the category's all around that. And then we get, again, to the, if we go further east, there's development that is, I guess, light industrial, but it's actually a neighbor, or it's SMU 6, so it's actually a neighborhood, but not light industrial. And then we have the other big pink area that's SMU 6 that, I mean, it looks like it's in between a bunch of neighborhoods. So anyway, I just kind of wanted to point out that's something to think about. I have had problems for a while with the SMU 6 category and its lack of transparency. And then how, in particular, when I see how it affects this property, it makes me question how, you know, why we're doing this. I will go along, but I, I am figuring out, and I've asked before, because I've run up against this time and time and time and time again, about us kind of doing this SMU 6 and every, and, you know, I used to think, oh, that's a good thing. But I'm not so sure it is in all these cases. And I'll support this tonight, kind of, kind of the posture it's in. But I'll just say, I do have my questions about it, and I wanted to explain what those were. I, I do have my questions about it, and I wanted to explain what those were.
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Well, we've closed the public hearing at this point, so this is just, we're in, I'm sorry, but we're in board discussion. I don't see any other commissioners willing to ask to say anything. Is that correct? So do I have a motion?
Move approval. I think you have.
It's already had.
Did you have one?
We already have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's right. We have a second. I apologize. I didn't write down. My apologies. Okay. So we have, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith. Can you take a roll call vote, please?
Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White. Commissioner White. Motion carried six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is A5, HCCPA 2109, future land use plan amendment for 58th Street South and 24th Avenue South. Planning Commission?
HTV, can you please bring up my presentation? Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, Yanika Mills, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2109, 58th Street South and 24th Avenue South. Next slide, please. This site is centrally located within Hillsborough County. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated amendment, small scale, a little over, almost three acres, located within the urban service area, and it's also located within the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan. Next slide, please. To give you some context of the area, 24th Avenue South runs along the northern portion of the site. 58th Street is to the east, and the site is just north of Causeway Boulevard for uses in the area. As we shift to the west, there is industrial uses along here. As we shift to the east of the site, it's predominantly single-family residential. And of course, as we move along Causeway, there is a presence of intense industrial uses. There's a vacant site directly to the south as well. Next slide, please. This is the site in its current state. It is currently vacant. This is east of the site. There's a single-family home directly to the east of the site. Next slide, please. This is north of the site. There is a presence of open storage uses. Next slide, please. West of the site, there is a marine-type shop to the west. Next slide, please. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is residential nine. Other future land use designations in the area, that gray area is light industrial to the west. Residential nine busts the site to the northeast and directly to the south. Further south along Causeway is Office Commercial 20. Next slide, please. The proposal for you this evening is to change the future land use designation to suburban mixed use six. Next slide, please. Currently, at a residential nine, future land use classification, the maximum density that could be considered on the site is 26 dwelling units. As for non-residential intensity, a little over 60,000 square feet could be considered. With the SMU six, the density would actually decrease to 17 dwelling units. The maximum intensity for SMU six would be 0.25 or 31,000 square feet. If they were to be approved for the SMU six, you could, Office Research Corporate Park could be considered at 0.35 FAR. Light industrial uses could be considered at 0.50 FAR. Again, the SMU six, the major difference between the residential nine and the suburban mixed use six is that the suburban mixed use six allows for consideration of industrial uses and open storage uses. Next slide, please. As I showed with the last presentation that I made for CPA 2105, CPA 2109 is not located within the economic development area of Palm River, which is considered, which is, supports industrial as well as non-residential uses. Next slide, please. The following request is with goal 12 of the future land use element, as well as economic development policies within our comprehensive plan, as well as the Greater Palm River Area Community Plan, which speaks to, which actually has a concept map, which directs this area of Palm River to be residential. Next slide, please. That is incorrect on the recommendation. Staff found the recommendation for HCCPA 2109 to be inconsistent. However, the Planning Commission recommends that HCCPA 2109 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission felt that the request would be consistent with the development pattern in the area, especially with the industrial uses that are located directly to the west. That concludes my presentation. If, I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have an opportunity to hear from the applicant at this point, and I'm assuming that's Ms. Dumas.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Dumas for the record, HTM I Inc. I'm here representing Juan Montecito, the applicant. The applicant is seeking to change the future land use map designation on 2.93 acres from RES nine to SMU six. This is a small-scale map amendment. His intent is to change the future land use to allow for open storage, truck parking, and a 2,500-square-foot building for office use for his trucking business. The comprehensive plan, along with the current PD rezoning, will allow the applicant to have open storage and truck parking and the office use. Currently, to the north of the property, the future land uses R9 and LI. Current uses are vehicle salvage storage. South of the subject site, the future land uses R9 and LI, with current uses as commercial intensive uses under PD 100667. In the approved PD, the uses are for warehouse, showroom, assembly, office, open storage, and CI uses, including garage, repairs, storage vehicles, materials, and equipment. I'd like to emphasize that two of the listed approved PD uses for the south parcel are the same uses that the applicant is proposing, which are for open storage and a building for office use. East of the subject site, the future land uses R9, with current uses as single-family residence. And west of the subject site, the future land uses LI, with current uses as warehouse. Back on January 13, 2021, a rezoning pre-application meeting, in a, in a rezoning pre-application meeting with Development Services and Planning Commission staff, we discussed a proposed flex of future land use R9 and LI, just as the parcel directly south was approved with the flex back in 2010. However, the Planning Commission staff indicated that the flex option would not be supported, and a request to change the future land use was necessary to pursue a future PD rezoning for the intended uses. Therefore, we sought to change the future land use of R9 to SMU six, as recommended by Planning Commission staff. As stated, the subject property is designated R9 on the future land use map, which provides areas that are suitable for suburban mix scale, suburban-scale residential development and non-residential use. RES nine is located to the north, south, and east of the subject property. The light industrial plant are located to the north and west of the site and accommodates intense uses for processing, manufacturing, warehouse, and storage materials. This area has, over time, transitioned to more intense uses. The proposed change of the future land use to SMU six is to allow for compatibility with the surrounding land uses in the area.
Ms. Dumas.
The subject site. Yes, ma'am.
Your time is expired. However, you are signed up for, as, for public hearing as a speaker. Is she allowed to use that time to continue her presentation?
It's really at the discretion of the board. Typically, our, our policy is to give each applicant representative three minutes.
Okay. Okay. Well, that, and we, so the only, the only person we have signed up for public speaking is, is Ms. Mai. So with that, I, I was, well, Ms. Mai, do you only have, do you have another few moments?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to state really quickly that we did receive seven letters of support from surrounding neighbors, including the neighbor directly to the east of the subject site. He, he supports this comp plan amendment, and I wanted to also emphasize that there is a nationwide shortage of truck parking, of truck parking and truck drivers in our community due to the pandemic. And so this comp plan amendment would greatly help our community and the applicant, and we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mai. And so I'm going to assume that you're going to give up your rebuttal at this point. So with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up for board discussion. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'm going to continue, and I'll tell you, I independently was looking prior to this at A4, because I have stumbled on that whole area many times. And then I come to A5, and I'm like, wait. So as I was told, that the reason for the inconsistency, the reason that the Planning Commission voted differently and looked at it differently from the planning staff, is that the Planning Commission recognized that it was against a Greater Palm River Community Plan. So, and we have been very, you know, supportive, and I, and I think Commissioner Smith has very much led the way for us to go back and respect our community plans that people, and I'm not familiar with when the Palm River Community Plan was made, but that people were, I was very familiar and active as an aide in the Ruskin Community Plan, or down there for several meetings, nothing like Commissioner Smith, but as well the Apollo Beach Community Plan and the Town and Country Community Plan at that time. And I know that different communities had different intensities and involvement and engagement and guidance and all kinds of things like that. So I, I look, I had y'all look at the last item, and then I look at this one, which, if we are to support the community plan, we would vote with staff in this and say, this is inconsistent. This is not what the community asked for when they designated the way that Palm River should be. But if we look now, and as I told you, it's another SMU six, which is being planned to use for light industrial warehousing, and I, I will tell you that I get concerned about the, I mean, you know, honestly, if we, I, you know, we used to be giving economic development dollars in waivers and all kinds of things to warehouses, and I didn't really ever support that policy, no matter how big or fancy the warehouse name was. And, and we gave it, we, I mean, we gave big, you know, benefits, public benefits to, to warehouses in the past, and I've always wondered why. And this isn't the case of this, but if you look at this one and you look at where it is in, in the map here, again, it's surrounded by what is residential 12. If you look, and if we could put that up? Or I must be looking at, let's see, what am I? We have heavy industrial, or light industrial, it's dark gray. And then all around there, I guess I was looking at a different map here, but we have the RES nine, and I guess I was looking at the adopted 2025, which is RES 12, which is essentially all the same. It's just a, a different color with a greater intensity. But if you look again at the Google aerial map at this, and if we could bring that up, you can see that this is undeveloped land. It looks in the middle of a lot of undeveloped land, or else what is currently, it looks like warehousing and open, unlike the other piece of property, which didn't look that way, but wasn't part of the Palm River Community Plan to keep it residential or, you know, to designate a different use. And I'm just, I, I just bring all this up, because I'm concerned about the community plan in that community, and, and I also am concerned about economic justice and development as it concerns Palm River and shuttering all these kinds of warehousing and, and things to Palm River. The benefits of warehouses as job places are not great. They usually are lower wage, and they're, as well, very few people, and a lot of, you know, road use and things like that. They are a business in the community, but I'm just, I'm, it seems to me, if I was going to place a warehouse, you know, it doesn't look like there's any residential development around here, so that when they made that original plan, I don't know if they really very predicted, very, very wrong. I don't know what drove that original community plan. I don't know if there's any support for the original community plan, doesn't seem to be, and I, I just, I'm just telling you, I'm in a quandary about this, and I'm pointing out why. And the SMU six, I just want to demonstrate that that's not maybe the category that people standardly expect it to be when, when they do this, and draw your attention to this. And I'll just be happy to, I'd like to hear from other commissioners if they have any, any thoughts on this.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for this discussion, which we can only have in sunshine meetings like this, about what mixed use means. It's something that my office has been kind of digging into at different points as well, because if you're, you know, like you say, we all, we all have, I think, more and more value for mixed, true mixed use with, but we envision that to be, you know, residences over shops on the ground floor, or a mix of, of jobs and, and community uses along with residential. And so often, it's not that at all in these categories. So thank you for, you know, the opportunity for us to be thinking about this as, as we move forward into thinking about how we might improve things along those lines. I will ask one question. You were talking, oh, well, Commissioner Kemp was talking about warehouses, but as I understand it, and I'll ask Ms., Ms. Mills. I understand it, and I'll ask Ms., Ms. Mills, this particular one is for a, a property owner or somebody who wants to do a trucking business with onsite truck storage plus an office for their trucking business. So, but are there warehouses involved in that?
From my understanding, it's trucking and office.
And, and open storage for the trucks that would be part of that truck business?
Correct.
And, and can you, the last question I'll ask is, can you help us understand a little bit more how this is inconsistent with the community plan? I'm, I'm kind of moved by the fact that the applicant said there were seven letters of support from the neighborhood. Did you, did you all see those?
That's, I believe it should be in my packet, yes.
Okay. And how exactly is it contrary to the community plan here?
So this is the concept map that I'm showing currently. The yellow area, according to the concept plan, is supposed to be meant for residential uses. Additionally, I would add that this plan amendment, one of the other differences is that this site is not located within that economic development area that economic development encourages industrial and office uses. So that was another difference.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, is that the extent of your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And I appreciate that I see Commissioner Collins going to speak. I just wanted to, and, and the clarifications, I just, and as long as it's the SMU six, and it's a very small piece of property, so I could see where it would be, the trucking uses was said, but of course, it could just be, it could go to light industrial or any of those other uses at any time. And I just, but it looks like if there was an area to do it, that would be the area, although I am familiar with the area further to the east, which also looks like another area, plus the other area that we saw. And I, I, again, I just worry about devaluing the community in some ways and not letting it have its economic potential. But again, I don't want to disregard a community plan. And so I'm, and I really think that perhaps it looks to me, just from these two observations, well, I've had long term, wanted to change the SMU six category and just require that there, you know, and I know there's pros and cons to that about a simply transparent light industrial, because light industrial just gets thrown into all these things and it's, I find it kind of disturbing as we make these important land use decisions. But I also want to make sure that we're not saddling a place like Palm River with, without their potential to do what, what they could be doing and, and is this best use and does it, how long does it permanently affect? And I know that Commissioner Overman is well aware of Florida Avenue, and it's taken probably 80 or 90 years to transition what is, and it's just happening now. But I mean, are we, you know, I'm just considering all those things because we are talking about future land use here, and this is decades and generations. And I, I think it's probably well timed, maybe first place to, to get a new community plan in, in this community. I know we've been looking at some, but also I'd really like, and I'll, I maybe will be bringing something forward in the future to change that category since, you know, I've asked about it kind of for five years and it's, it's, it just, it causes me some heartburn frequently when I see that.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. And I'll be brief, but I just wanted to speak because Commissioner Kemp asked for people's thoughts. And I, it's always very interesting to me when we have a case where there's a split between the different guiding agencies that we look to. In this case, it's the planning commission staff and the planning commission itself, but, you know, sometimes it's our staff and the planning commission. And it always, for me, is a little bit of a red flag that there's something interesting about, about the application, there's something different about it. And in this particular case, it made me, it made me sort of look around it for the context. And the conclusion, I, first of all, whenever something is on the border of one land use category and another, that, that tends to me at least to be a sign that you really have to look at the actual, the actual, not the, the color coded map, but the actual uses that are going on around it in order to sort of decipher what's appropriate and not. And when I looked at this one, what I saw was no real residential around it. And that was the, the thing that, that, that made me feel like that's, and I think this was said earlier, that that's what the planning commission members must have been looking at when they made a decision contrary to the staff. I agree about wanting to be sensitive to community plans, but the fact that there is neighborhood support and the fact that no one has come forward to say that they're concerned about this as a violation of the community plan makes me think that it's possible the community plan is outdated, as you, as I think you mentioned. But it also, I, I think, just reflects the context of what the uses are that are actually occurring around this particular spot. And that was what led me to, to be inclined to support it. But I will say that I think this is an excellent, you know, this SMU issue that you brought up tonight, definitely something that we should look at, and maybe we can be a little bit more specific in the future about the way that we assign these categories.
Okay. I would like to, oops, offer some insight there. Commissioner Smith? I don't.
That's not me.
It's not, it's not Commissioner Smith. I looked, I thought so too, but it's not. Okay, so I'd like to offer, there is, there is some confusion here because it does appear as though, you know, we're, we've got a lot of industrial area, light industrial area. We've got some, an area that the, the community plan indicates that the vision for greater Palm River area illustrates unique qualities. Future development and redevelopment is required. They're encouraging new infill redevelopment compatible with existing community patterns. And the planning and growth would seem to be more in the area of economic development rather than residential. I'm not seeing a huge residential component to their community plan. So I'm, I, I recognize that it does appear as though this is primarily going to be a business area, but I think the conflict is, is where we're really looking at our overall areas and recognizing that Palm River is a dense area where, where we want residential density, where we want, you know, off of a commuter line or off of a potential transit line, there's an opportunity here, but it's not in the plan. It's not in the land code, and it's not in the community plan. So in line with that, I'm going to pass the gavel to Commissioner Smith and make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Overman, second by Commissioner Myers, and I see Mr. Garcia, your hand is raised. You're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. You have the keen eye this evening.
I did not see that.
That's okay. There's no fault, no fault in that because you were, you were busy wanting to make the motion and pass the gavel, so I totally understand that as well. I just wanted to very briefly contribute some great comments by all of you this evening on this particular case, but what I, the only context I wanted to add to it was, the Palm River area is a, an area in transition in certain parts in addition to the vision map that you're seeing. Let's not forget that the, that the community plan map is really a static map. And as Mr. Cohen has already correctly stated, it's been a while since it's been revisited as far as areas transitioning. There's a lot of mom and pop businesses that have been in the area for a long time that have contributed to our economy, and they consequently are in areas where they're viewed as being non-conforming, which is what one of the cases was this evening, the first of the two Palm River cases. So we see that area eventually, most of that transition to SMU six. You do have existing residential there, but it's allowed under the SMU six because it is conforming. You can allow it to have six units to the, to the acre in that particular part under the SMU six, but you can also allow the light industrial. We try and use the SMU six, just so as you know, as a planning staff, for those areas that we might consider being transitional areas that coexist between having these type of very light, almost like sublight industrial uses, mom and pop businesses that try and coexist with residential uses. This is also a very similar case, and Commissioner Cohen will understand this because he worked in the city of Tampa. There's a transitional use 24 category in the city of Tampa for certain areas, east of, east of, east of 50th Street, south of Columbus Drive in that Broadway area where we have a similar situation. So there, there are areas where we try and, and use trends, existing trends, as well as, you know, a lot of these uses that are non-conforming and trying to make them conform. There, there's not usually a lot of transition when we see this happening, but we have had two other amendments in that area on the southern portion that also have transitioned to SMU six historically. So we knew that there was a transition there on that southern part. But I just wanted to give a little bit more context so that you all could see where we were coming from, from a staff perspective as far as how we try and use the SMU six category in different situations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for contributing that perspective as, as we work this out. Does anybody in the room have their hand raised?
Sorry, Commissioner Kemp has her hand raised.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
And I'll be very brief, but I really just wanted to raise this between those two. And as I said, it's been for me an ongoing issue, and I'd rather have clear intentional categories. And I'd really like not to just see, as I said, Palm River moved in to be totally the new industrial area. I know a lot of, you know, people in other communities would be objecting if that were happening to them. And I know that we've, in Seminole Heights, struggled with that in the city, but we were long past that. And for instance, at least where there's a lot of residential around, it seems like neighborhood commercial would be the more appropriate category. And the SMU six to allow the industrials, I said, is not, it just doesn't give enough clarity and intention to me. And, and as has been stated and as well known, it's just been a long, long time since this map has been looked at, and it looks like a lot of things have happened, but it also looks like there's a lot of opportunities still there from what I can see. It looks like a lot of open parcels and land. And so I really wanted to highlight that tonight because, you know, I'm, I will be voting to support this. It made more sense to me in the second condition than the first, but, and I, I really wanted to call it to this board's attention because I think it's important.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members?
I don't see any further hands raised.
Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yeah.
Kim?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Commissioner White?
Thank you. Motion carried, six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item is A six, HC CPA 2113, future land use map amendment for Fletcher Avenue and Park Square South. Planning Commission, you're recognized. Ms. Mills?
I am, I am the caboose on this one this evening.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chairman. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. Chris, could you please pull up my PowerPoint? Thank you. Before you is your last item for consideration this evening. This is HC CPA 21-13, located at 3450 East Fletcher Avenue. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is located right on the border, right on the edge between the city of Tampa and incorporated Hillsborough County, HC CPA 21-13. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial of this site, a certain scale there so one can see. This is just east of Bruce B. Downs and Fletcher Avenue, that intersection, and this is just north, on the north face of Fletcher Avenue, just on the outskirts of the University of South Florida campus. The, the hospital is directly to the west, right there on that northeast corner of the Bruce B. Downs intersection and Fletcher Avenue. There are a variety of office uses on the east side and a lot of multifamily to the north of the site. And there are some neighborhood commercial and general commercial serving uses to the west of Bruce B. Downs is one where to go, west of the intersection of Fletcher and Bruce B. Downs. Of course, on that eastern side, there are quite a few medical office buildings, professional office buildings, and there are also several multifamily projects that have come before this board not too long, not too long ago. We, we had one fairly close to this site, and I'll show you that in another one of the maps that I'll be showing you this evening. So this is a privately initiated map amendment. It's only two and a half acres. This is located within the urban service area, and it is within the boundaries of the university area community plan. Next slide, please. As far as your future land use map is concerned, there are several land use categories here. This current site has a designation of office commercial 20. You have residential 20 and also public, semi-public. Next slide, please. The request is to go to regional mixed use 35. You can see that you'll skip a parcel, and then there's another parcel to the east that's also regional mixed use 35. That was also the subject of a plan amendment request about five or six years ago, to go from office commercial 20 to the regional mixed use 35. Next slide, please. The potential impacts, the adopted office commercial 20 has a maximum density of a point five, of 50, of 50 dwelling units as far as the density potential is concerned. Your maximum intensity from an FAR perspective is a point seven five FAR with a 600,000 maximum total, and then you have a commercial component that's capped at 350,000 square feet. Going to the regional mixed use 35, your maximum density would be 88 dwelling units, and then you have a maximum intensity of a 1.0 FAR, which will allow 220,413 square feet. If this is approved, the plan amendment change would also allow consideration of light industrial, regional scale, retail, or research corporate park uses. So again, we do have another category that's a mixed use category that would allow the potential for light industrial uses or other more intensive uses. But in this particular area, along one of these major corridors, one can see that this would be a more appropriate category to take into consideration on this site. I'm going to, my phone is ringing on my, on my desk, and I cannot stop that, so I need to mute for one second so you don't get distracted from that.
They may have hung up on you already.
They never cease to amaze me how persistent they are. All right, so let me get to the next slide, please. So to give you an aerial perspective and a bit greater context of what's happening in this area, this is a little bit of a dated slide. This is, this piece over here is under development right now for a multifamily use. You'll see a, in the subsequent photos that I'll show you when I went outside, you'll see some of those pictures. But the subject site in question is, is identified by this little red pin that I've got dotting the site right above this building. This is currently an, an office use. You do have some multifamilies, one can see, a little bit further to the east. This is the site over here with my cursor right at the edge of this particular aerial that you can see. This is the one that was This is currently an office use. You do have some multifamilies, one can see, a little bit further to the east. This is the site over here with my cursor right at the edge of this particular aerial that you can see. This is the one that was the, the subject of that plan amendment that I told you about about five or six years ago that we did to RMU 35 for this, this particular use. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit of a greater scale, so you can really see what's been happening. You can see that this actually shows you more of an update. Where my cursor is over here, you can see that that undeveloped lot now through time, you can see is, is being developed for another multifamily project. You do have this office project, this is another office project immediately adjacent to it, and of course, the new multifamily project that was built. Of course, this is Fletcher Avenue, and you can see all the medical, medically related office uses that are proximate to the University Community Hospital. Next slide, please. So this is more of a ground view. This is the subject site, the 3450. This is a office building, the one in development for multifamilies directly to the west. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit more to the west, so you get a perspective of the area that was under construction for that other, this is again, a multifamily use that's being constructed here as we speak. Next slide, please. This is just an eastern perspective to show you that there are multifamily uses that are on site, but there's also, what I'd like to show you here is that you do have some of the areas for the Hartline buses. You can see that there's a shelter on this side, and there's a pickup site on the other side over here, because we are seeing a lot more density that's being, transitioning into the area. That's really, we've seen a big trend into higher density for this particular area. Next slide, please. This is the new multifamily that's two parcels away to the east of the subject site. Next slide, please. This is the medical building that lies in between the multifamily project that I just showed you and the subject site, which is here just to the west of this medical office building. Next slide, please. This is a little bit different perspective of the same building that I just showed you. Next slide, please. And this again, this is just an eastern perspective going down, what used to be formerly John Knox Village is down in the distance over here, which is a retirement community. This is a multifamily project that I showed you from the, from the perspective of Fletcher Avenue. Next slide, please. There were no objections. The only comments that we did have was that adequate capacity does exist in adjacent concurrency areas at the elementary level to accommodate the maximum residential impact of the project that's coming from the school board. Next slide, please. Regarding consistency findings, it is consistent with the future land use element, specifically Objective 16, which deals with neighborhood protection, mitigation of impacts, and transition of intensity and density. Activity centers, Objective 40, identification of the centers, specifically as a relation to the university area community plan within the livable communities element. Goal 2, which talks about supporting a variety of land use options, promotion of mixed use developments in the area, and also providing greater flexibility in land use and density for future development. Next slide, please. Based on these findings, Planning Commission did find and concur with staff's recommendation, finding HCCPA 2113 consistent with the future Hillsborough comprehensive plan, and has forwarded that recommendation to you all for your adoption consideration this evening. That concludes my presentation. I will be available for any questions, should there be any.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Appreciate it. This is a public hearing. We can hear from the applicant. If the applicant is present, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jessica Iserman. I am with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa. I am here today to discuss this comprehensive plan amendment. I think you had great discussion today, and so I'll keep it short. We do have our team available with us. We have Toby Orneheim and Chip Webb, who are principals of the applicant. We also have our planner and engineer available if there are any questions. There is a companion PD that will come before you early next year to allow for a multifamily project that is anticipated to go at this location. And I'm very excited for this project. It's perfectly located across the street from USF. It's transit-oriented, along that transit-oriented corridor with pedestrian facilities abundant and adjacent to very high employment areas. So if you have any questions, we're available. We do have our presentation, but in the, you know, for time purposes, I'll forego that unless there is a request for a more in-depth presentation. Thank you, too.
Thank you very much. I don't see anyone speaking, signed up to speak, and I'm going to assume we're not going to have a rebuttal here since we have no speakers. So I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for a Board of County Commission discussion. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yeah, very quick point is, yes, this area has been seeing a lot of increase in density as well it should. You know, the university, the hospitals, the businesses that are up in this area, the transit connections that we are working very hard to improve. This is an area where we all clearly have wanted more density and have been putting more density. My only regret is that, or food for thought, anyway, is that as we hand out this density, this is, this, it's, I just wish that we could be selling development rights, transfer of development rights from places where we'd like to, you know, preserve agriculture, preserve more rural lifestyles, into areas like this where we really want more density. And the more, you know, the old process of just agreeing, okay, let's just hand it out, is kind of contrary to, the more we keep doing this, the less we'll ever be able to persuade somebody to go through the extra steps of figuring out, negotiating a deal of transferring development rights from one place to another if it's, if it's just this easy to get it. With that, I'll move approval. I just wanted to make that point.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Cohen. I'd just like to add that I'm doing a serious happy dance over here, because I'm very happy to see this density come for the type of projects and density, as well as affordable housing that seems to come along with these kinds of efforts. So I'm very glad to see that. I'm not sure that that's where we're going with this one, but I'm very glad to see it, because we need, we need housing. And with that, seeing no further comments or discussion, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White? Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance for adoption of the small-scale future land use map amendments, Amendment A3, A4, A5, and A6.
Still moved.
Second.
Excellent. Seeing no further comment, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White? Thank you, motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And seeing no further items for discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Garcia, you're recognized.
Thank you. Trying to find the correct timing not to interrupt you, trying to catch you within a pause. I do have a development that I did want to bring up for the, for the board to know this evening. You'll know about it a little bit more in depth, because we'll be sending out the notice tomorrow. But there was an issue with the noticing for our ad for next week's hearing on the 16th. So as a result of that, you will not have an evening hearing next week on the 16th for those plan amendments. They will be rescheduled to be heard on January the 13th, which is already on your BOCC master calendar. So this evening, this is your last public hearing for this calendar year. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and everything else that's applicable to that, to let you know that, a little bit of, I guess, an early present for the holidays. So there is no evening hearing next Thursday evening, commissioners. And we will be sending out more of a formal notice of that from our offices tomorrow, and we will have contacted all of the applicants and the representatives to let them know about that as well.
Did you also forget to notice next Tuesday? Just asking.
No, sorry.
That will be okay, too.
Sorry, Commissioner Kemp.
Mr. Garcia, that was the most excellent early Christmas present I think I've heard in a bit.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very, very much for that notice, and Merry Christmas to everyone. Commissioner Cohen, you had a comment?
Mr. Garcia, if we're not having a meeting next week, does this mean that tonight is your last hearing before you retire? Or are we going to see you again?
Well, you will see me again next month, but under different circumstances, I believe. But technically, this is my last public hearing in this capacity, serving as a member of the Planning Commission, yes.
Well, I just want you to know, I'll speak just for myself. I'm sure others want to add, but I want to wish you all the best in retirement. Your friendly and trusting face, all these years at land use hearings has always been, has always been very welcome, and I appreciate, I know we all appreciate all of the hard work that you've done over the years, and we wish you the very best.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just also want to wish you the best, and you gave a very good explanation tonight, so we'll miss that, and your expertise after all these years. And it's always been fun.
Happy retirement.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, seeing no further comments, we're adjourned.
Bye, Tony. Best wishes.
Thank you.